All right, we'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for March 23rd, 2020. Roll call, please. Dr. Akbar?
Here, sorry.
Mr. Alexander?
Present.
Ms. Autry?
Present.
Mr. Bravo?
Present.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Dr. Hall, either we have, are you there?
I'm not, sorry, I was on mute, sorry.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Here.
Ms. McKittrick?
Here.
Thank you. All right, and I know that we have some, we are limited by our digital constraints, but if you could all just in place, join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it today, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, before we begin with community and school reflections, I just want to thank everybody for joining us virtually. This is certainly an unprecedented time, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate our responsibilities, not only as a board, but also as fellow citizens. We've moved our meetings virtually for the health and safety of all of those involved, not just our board members who are present with us today on the meeting, but those who are required to be here in person whenever we meet, as well as to the public and the press. When weighing our responsibilities as a board, the risks were simply too great to ask everyone to come in for a meeting, so we are here virtually. To that end, I do have a resolution to present tonight that has been prepared by legal counsel. It's also been provided to all of our board members in board docs for, just in case you have not been able to review the final version, and for those that are joining us virtually, I'm going to read through it very quickly. It is a resolution suspending in-person meetings at the Akron City Schools Board of Education during state of emergency and public health orders to stop the spread of COVID-19. Whereas on March 9th, 2020, the governor declared a state of emergency, an executive order 2020-01-D, to protect Ohioans from the spread of COVID-19. And whereas on March 12th, 2020, the director of the Ohio Department of Health issued an order prohibiting mass gatherings in the state of Ohio to stop the spread of COVID-19. Whereas on March 14th, 2020, the director of the Ohio Department of Health issued an order closing all K-12 schools in the state of Ohio to prevent the spread of COVID-19. And whereas on March 23rd, 2020, the director of the Ohio Department of Health issued an order requiring residents to stay at home and closing all nonessential businesses. And whereas these orders are unprecedented steps taken by the Ohio Department of Health and the governor to combat the spread of COVID-19 in the state of Ohio. And whereas on March 13th, 2020, the Ohio Attorney General issued guidance to public bodies on how to comply with Ohio's Open Meeting Act under the Ohio Department of Health orders and the governor's declaration of emergency to prevent the spread of COVID-19. And whereas the Ohio Attorney General stated that the public bodies may be able to hold meetings via video conference, telephone conference, or other electronic means to satisfy its obligations under the Open Meetings Act in the limited circumstances where the governor has declared a state of emergency, and the Ohio Department of Health has issued an order limiting mass gatherings to stop the spread of COVID-19. And whereas upon information and belief, the Ohio General Assembly will be meeting this week to address legislation that will provide additional guidance to public bodies on how to comply with Ohio's Open Meetings Act during this unprecedented time. And whereas the Board of Education for the Akron City Schools has policies that require board members to be present in person to conduct board meetings. And whereas the board desires to take all steps lawful and necessary to protect the health and safety of the public, staff, and the board. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Board of Education of the Akron City School District, Section 1, that the board shall suspend in-person board meetings and committee meetings beginning at its regularly scheduled meeting tonight on Monday, March 23rd, 2020. Until such time, the board passes a resolution reinstating in-person meetings. Section 2, the board shall conduct its board meetings and committee meetings via electronic means beginning at its regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, March 23rd, 2020, until the board passes a resolution reinstating in-person meetings. Section 3, the board shall livestream its board meetings and committee meetings beginning on March 23rd, 2020, until the board passes a resolution reinstating in-person meetings for the public to view. Section 4, the board hereby waives any requirements in its policies requiring in-person attendance of board meetings at board meetings, board members at board meetings, and/or committee meetings beginning on March 23rd, 2020, until the board passes a resolution resuming in-person meetings. It is hereby found to determine that all formal actions of the board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the board. I will entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Dr. Akbar.
Second.
We have a second by Valerie McKittrick. Are there any comments, question, or discussion before we pass this resolution? Hearing none, roll call, please. Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Thank you. So, thank you for that. So, beginning tonight and until further notice, all of our meetings and committee meetings, of course, will be conducted virtually. We're going to ensure that they remain open and available to the public, will be live streaming during this time. And we will review, and are currently reviewing, how we will handle requests to address the board should these protective measures stay in place for a prolonged period of time. And we'll update the board as we move forward, particularly if we receive a need that cannot be simply read into the record and provided by written comment. So if any member of the public that's watching this, or that we speak to out in public wishes to address the board, and they're willing to provide written public comment, please get that to us, and I'll be happy to read it into the record at our meetings unless and until we have a better way to do that. Or if the request can wait, then we will work with the public to get them in here as soon as we are back to normal business operations. Obviously, as you guys see on the agenda too, we're also going to be shortening our meetings and entertaining primarily items that are essential to the business of the district as much as possible. Where there's a need for executive session, we discussed that this morning as well. We are anticipating that we'll have a separate virtual meeting standing by where board members can log out of this public session, log into the executive session, and return when the executive session has concluded. Just a reminder to the board members that are participating, I can see you, so if you have something that you want to contribute, make sure just to give me a wave or a hi sign, and I'll acknowledge you in turn, so that we're not talking over one another. And if you can, if you can mute your microphone when you're not speaking, that'll help us cut down on the background noise. Just want to give our thanks again to the superintendent, the treasurer, their staff, for all the difficult work they've put in to help us navigate the current climate and to ensure that teaching and learning are still taking place. And we'd like to welcome back our teaching staff this week, we know they're busy preparing lessons for our students, including mine, for next week. So, welcome back, and thank you for all of your hard work as well. At this time, we're going to open it up for community and school reflections. Mr. Alexander?
Mr. President, I just have a comment, and again, I want to also state that superintendent and his staff administration have done a good job. I want to thank our teachers, thank them for being proactive and protecting our staff and teachers, as well as our students. I think this is very, something we needed to do, something that was very much needed, and I'm glad that we didn't wait like some other places and get ourselves in a situation, so I just wanted to thank all of the state superintendent administration and our teachers for serving our students in a proper manner. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, Ms. Autry?
Yeah, and just kind of piggybacking on that, this is a thank you again, and much appreciation to our superintendent and treasurer and everyone. All that we've done, they've done to make this as tolerable and seamless as possible. I did touch base with all of the schools in my cluster, and they also just echoed the same, so I just wanted to pass along their thanks and appreciation for everything that's being done and how things are being handled, so, thank you.
Good, thank you. Yes, Ms. Mansfield?
Hi there. Hey, I want to give just a couple shout-outs, there are some people doing some above and beyond things, so many people doing above and beyond things. I want to give a shout-out to Katie Boyd Beal, who has created an online support for APS staff, and she's been running that. I don't know how that's not a 24/7 gig right now, in addition to getting her classroom things ready. I would love to have her, when this is all over, come to board, she and I are definitely going to have been giving each other a virtual hug, because she's an amazing person. She's a STEM middle school history teacher, I think 8th grade, but I could be wrong. And also to Tisha Graham, who is one of our activity specialists at Betty Jane. She is posting daily to, at least daily, to the PTA for Betty Jane. She's posting her reading a book, so she sees the kids every day at lunch, and first of all, she misses them very much, and I'm sure they miss her. So she's been reading the Walter books, and Walter is a dog who has a problem with his digestive tract. So she's making the boys laugh, and the kudos that she's been getting from the parents have just been amazing. Also, I just want to, I know that David and Ryan have already gotten thanks, I want to give a shout-out to Ellen, her emails that go out at all hours. I don't know when she's sleeping, and I'm concerned about that, but they go out at all hours to the education staff, prepping them for this week, and getting them through that. And also, I think I saw that one of our student school board members, Salam, on with us as well, I think I saw her name pop up, and I just wanted to acknowledge that she's there as well and listening along with us, and that's it, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, and she is on, and she will have a report to share as well. Anyone else? And if I can't see you because you're not showing up on my screen, then just give me a quick shout, or you can always send me a quick message through the chat feature, yes, Dr. Akbar?
Yes, so, I'm going to do the same thing, in the same vein, I guess. And we have, as a district, really been responsive, and I just want to say thank you again to everyone, to the community. There's obviously still more work that we need to do as things are fluid and changing every day. And just want to acknowledge that we have heard from some communities that need more support as far as the food, and that the district is working on looking at that and figuring out ways to get food in some of the areas where schools are not as close. Just want to acknowledge that we've received that information, and the district is working to find some solutions for that. And other than that, I've heard from a few people just how thankful they are in how responsive they've been able to be in the district and getting their medications for their children, and their Chromebooks if they didn't have them, and just a whole host of other things, so. Even though this is not something we planned for or wanted, it just shows how strong our district is.
Great, thank you.
And, Mr. President, this is Dr. Hall, if I could weigh in, please?
Yes.
So yeah, we just echo the earlier conveyed sentiments, and I think the only thing I would add would just be that, you know, both Ohio as well as APS has been consistently ahead of the curve, no pun intended, in how we have handled and addressed these emergent circumstances. And so I look forward to working with the administration, as well as you, my fellow board colleagues, to ensure that we stay ahead of the curve as we proceed over the next six to 12 months.
Thank you. Ms. McKittrick? Or Ms. Sayed?
Not to be redundant, but to thank the administration, the faculty, the staff, and everyone involved in helping our kids get the lessons that they need.
Thank you. Salam, you also had a report that you'd like to share?
Yes, sir, okay. Hi, my name is Sanam Sayed, I am a sophomore at the National Blue Ribbon School at Akron Early College. I am a candidate for an associate's degree in science, my pathway is associate of science. First, I would like to share some of my high school experiences with you all. Second, I would like to share how the coronavirus is affecting Akron Public School students and the Akron community. As a student at Akron Early College, my peers and I at Akron Early College have the opportunity to earn the associate's degree while earning our high school diplomas. Eighty percent of Akron Early College graduates continue their education and seek a bachelor's degree. Fifty percent of Akron Early College graduates attend the University of Akron and take advantage of the Innovation Generation Scholarship. My goal is to become a recipient of the Innovation Generation Scholarship. I am a first-generation college student, and money and time cannot be wasted on indecisiveness. The partnership with the College Career Academies of Akron provides support for my peers and I to have a career exploration experiences. Career exploration experiences are important because only 70% of the Akron Early College graduates earn their bachelor's degree. Career exploration gives us students insights into our likes, talents, and passions. With this insight, we are more likely to have a career focus and earn a bachelor's degree and further our education. In October, for my industry field trip, I visited Medical Clinic Open M. The Medical Clinic Open M is a partner with Akron Early College, and is located at 9041 Princeton Street in Akron. Open M Clinic provides care for uninsured adults through semi-county. Enroll patients receive all services, including medications and diabetic supplies, free recharge. During my visit, I toured the facility and met with the medical staff, two doctors, and one nurse. One of the doctors shared that she began her medical career as a candy striper at the age of 16. While in college, she stayed in the medical field, but changed her major several times, until she found her career fit. It was a good experience hearing the doctor's story, because it allowed me, because it allowed me to think about what I really want to focus on in my career. At this time, I'm pretty sure I want to be, I want to be a nurse practitioner. I appreciate the opportunities to continue, I appreciate the opportunities to continue career exploration and visit more medical facilities. My experience with this current pandemic makes me think how my role in the medical field may help one day. Currently, many APS students are anxious and curious about what the next move are in terms of school because of the coronavirus pandemic. There are some questions I receive from students. One, seniors are concerned about graduation, what their requirements are. Two, do we need the OS T to be successful after graduation, and will we have to take it at a later time? Three, how will students balance their home life and school life at the same time? For example, parents might want their students to do chores or babysit siblings. Four, a student emailed me as she is going to Indiana to stay with her dad. She is concerned about how she will complete her assignments and how it will affect her learning. I replied to her email and told her that I don't think it would affect her learning as long as she completed her assignments. I told her to make sure that it's stable in Indiana and that she has Wi-Fi in the internet. Students must therefore reassure that things will return to normal. Going to school is what is normal, I am aware that none of us know the exact day school will reopen, but students need to know that it will reopen. My math teacher, Abraham Kanate, uses webinar to communicate with the students. My other teachers communicate with students using Google Classroom, and they text with students using Google Hangouts. Any platform like this would be a good way to communicate with and reassure students. Furthermore, when students and families are reassured, schools like mine will continue to grow and receive awards like National Blue Ribbon. As I mentioned before, Akron Early College is a National Blue Ribbon High School. To celebrate this great accomplishment, I have some gifts on behalf of my principal, Ms. Cheryl Conley, and the student body. At the appropriate time, please open your bags. On the behalf of the student board members, we wish health to all APS students, staff, and their families, thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
No, but we definitely, well, not for me, I'll let the rest of the board chime in, but we definitely appreciate hearing the perspective of students as we're kind of navigating the COVID-19 situation. So thanks for including that in your report, that's very interesting, insightful.
Yeah, this is Dr. Hall, I just had a quick comment on that as well. So actually, the report out that was just provided actually preempted a question I was going to ask, which was, I would love, as we sort of move these board meetings forward, to get a regular update from our student board members on just how, you know, our students are being impacted by these changes. You know, again, as everyone here on this call knows, you know, online learning is not what we normally do. And so as we sort of, you know, sort of practice, you know, becoming more expert in administering, you know, this particular skill set, I think it's integral to the process as we move forward to get regular feedback from, not just our teachers, but also from our students on just sort of what they're seeing, you know, the good, the bad, and the ugly. So, again, I really appreciate this, and would hope that we're going to have this continue in some form at subsequent board meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mansfield?
I just, I want to tell Salam that one of the things that we have in our heads, we all had senior year experiences, some were good, some were bad, but those are memories that we know that you all have been looking forward to, and I think it's okay right now to be sad about that, and to be kind of even mad or upset, and I think you need to let yourself feel that. And also, don't think that we are discounting that at all. And if there's anything possible, because we don't know the answers to a lot of those questions either, right? I mean, we watch the governor every day, or listen to the governor as often as we, you know, whenever he's on, and we listen to what they say, and once the legislature is back in session later this week, we may know more. But just know that we are thinking about those things too, all of us, and we're thinking about all of you, and how much that means to you. So if you want to reach out to us, you have our emails, you know how to get through to us, so please don't hesitate to do that. I know we have a lot of student school board members that are seniors. I think all but one, maybe two, are seniors, so, you know, feel that with you, and we are, we're not discounting that at all.
And to Dr. Hall's point, it might be good if you could share with your fellow student board representatives that, you know, it'd be great to hear each of their perspectives on how they're navigating, so we'd really appreciate that. Anyone else have questions or comments? Hearing none, we do have one request to address the board, which was submitted in writing from Ms. Emily Riddell, who is a parent at Miller South School for the Visual and Performing Arts. She did ask that we read this into the record, and so I'm going to read this. "I am writing in support of reinstating two full-time art teachers to Miller South School for the Visual and Performing Arts instead of the 1.5 that are there now. When I enrolled my daughter at Miller South, I was excited at the prospect of her being able to explore different disciplines through the exploratory program. When she got to Miller South, we found out that due to the changing, changing the art faculty from 2 to 1.5, there would no longer be art exploratory. I believe that there are many reasons that our students benefit from having visual arts as an exploratory. In bullet points, without an art exploratory, students will not take an art class from grades four through eight. Every school in the area requires art. The high schools in our area will expect students to have basic artistic abilities. Without art as an exploratory, our student will be behind their peers. Having basic art skills allows for a more well-rounded student. It helps them develop spatial awareness, and they develop the creativity needed to be critical thinkers. Visual arts play a role in many occupations, for example, engineering, architecture, math, music, therapy, to name a few. Allowing students to have a background in art will make them better at their chosen field, or lead them in a direction they did not think of before. My daughter now plays the violin because of the strings exploratory she had in 4th grade. Without that opportunity, she would have never known she liked to play the violin. There are probably many students at Miller South who do not know they have a talent for art, and will not know if the art exploratory was not reinstated. In order for our program to be recognized as the best program in the area, our teachers need to be able to expose the community to the students' art. Without two full-time art teachers, we are not able to do this. In conclusion, the reinstatement of two full-time art teachers at Miller South is needed to provide our students with the arts education that they deserve. The current 8th grade class will graduate from a performing arts school with never having had an art class. This needs to change. In order to keep attracting top-notch students, we need to provide them with a well-rounded arts education, and the only way to do that is to reinstate a second full-time art teacher, so all students can experience art. Thank you for your consideration, Emily Riddell." Thank you, Ms. Riddell, for reaching out to us, your request has been noted. We will pass this along to the superintendent and ask him to prepare a response to you, and we will be looking into it as well. We have no recognitions, no communication, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the regular meeting minutes for March 12th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Valerie McKittrick, and a second from Diana, any comments, questions, or discussion on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, roll call, please. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar? Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, superintendent's recommendations, personnel?
Yes. Mr. President, just making sure my mic is on, I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories 5 through 16.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Lisa Mansfield, a second by Diana Autry, any comments, question, or discussion on the personnel recommendations? Hearing none, roll call, please. Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 21, making a note that item number 21.3 was approved previously.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion by either Mr. Alexander, Mr. Akbar, and a second by Ms. McKittrick. Any comments, question, or discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing none, roll call, please. Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. McKittrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in category 23.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Alexander, and a second by Ms. Mansfield, any comments, question, or discussion on the Business Affairs? We have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Ms. Mansfield. Any comments, question, or discussion on the Business Affairs Agenda Items? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Um, uh, just briefly, uh, you know, we're all aware that uh, teachers are have returned virtually and are really working diligently through um, getting lessons ready for next week, and I do want to give um, kudos to our teachers because a lot of many of them, not a lot, most of them actually had worked on providing uh, enrichment activities to our students um, across the district. Um, you know, during the previous weeks that we've been uh, closed. I also want to give uh, kudos to our child nutrition department. I believe today the meal count was approximately seven thousand. And as Dr. Akbar mentioned uh, at the beginning of the meeting, there there have been a couple of issues, you know, with um, areas of the district that are, you know, um, not located close to some of our distribution centers, and we're working through of uh, various community partners and working with the state to try and fix um, that problem.
Thank you.
Just quick, quick, quick question, if I may, Mr. President.
Yes.
So, so Dr. James, um, if I heard you raise it that today the count was seven, seven thousand meals?
Yes.
So I know that we were at, what, fourteen thousand at the end of last week, so i- is it is it just something where we're, you know, where where the start of the week just kind of starts off slower? I mean, I I guess I'm trying to figure out if there's any rhyme or reason to why we're seeing the
Yeah, there is a rhyme or reason. We had Chromebook pickups last week at our schools for students who didn't have their Chromebooks because um, some of them didn't show up to school, so there were a larger number of students who came to our schools on Thursday of last week to get some of their other materials, and as they were there, they were picking up meals.
Great, thank you. Good. Any other questions or comments for Mr. James? Okay. I already gave my report, Treasurers Report.
Quick report tonight, uh, just extending a thanks to all those finance, operation, HR, tech, food service, student support, uh, and all the supporting mechanisms from Central Office uh, throughout the rest of the district and reporting instruction. It's been truly amazing to be a part of under the superintendent's leadership, where we're coming together multiple times a day uh, in formats just like this. And um, all of our supporting staff are working from home and keeping those operations afloat. Uh, as a couple of the board members on Finance Committee know, today was a pretty significant day that uh, we had to reschedule, and that's the two thousand nineteen fiscal uh, just a cou- couple of quick highlights there and something that we'll bring back to the board as a whole. Uh, but every month, we're reconciling cash flow of north of about a hundred and thirty million dollars in taxpayer dollars in cash flow, and on an annual basis, that's well over a half a billion. And uh, those responsibilities in the staff that prepare those financial reports, um, they haven't missed a beat, and so we really appreciate all their support uh, because they they know the ultimate mission. So we'll be, I'm anxious to bring back those audit results to the board and taxpayers to share at a future um, future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, question, or discussion on the Treasurers Report? Hearing none, Committee Reports, Legal Contracts, and Board Policy? No.
This is Dr. Akbar.
There you are.
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I think there's a Yes, I think there's a slight lag in the video.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, I did have one thing for Ryan, though, that that I got caught up. Um, I don't know what's going on, but uh, I I just wanted to to say to to Ryan and his staff. Um, and as we work through everything with paying staff and uh, making sure everything gets uh, um, taken care of. Um, then the ability for people to do their jobs at home and keep the district operations afloat. Um, that's one of the things that I've heard from a lot of the some instructional individuals and hourly people uh, who work for us um, in our district is being concerned about missing payments and not being able to take care of their business, so um, your staff is keeping um, our our people uh, afloat as well as a little more centered in this crazy world that we're in right now. So thank you. So let's see.
Thank you.
Um, the the uh, Legal Contracts and Board Policy Committee met on Friday. Say again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Can you not hear me? Oh, okay. Did you say something? Okay, um, you say I'm not doing what?
I said you're not getting a check from Verizon, correct?
I missed it. So can you, so I'm just gonna go ahead. So, um, the board. Oh, no. Oh, Lord. Um, I should be if you're not, if you can't hear me. Um, a policy committee met on Friday, and um, we discussed two policies in our, in a, in a second reading that we're presenting today for a third reading. And the first policy is students at risk of not graduating with a high school diploma. Um, and that policy is presented to you in board docs. Um, and part of it is uh, identifying students' policy. Um, and there will be uh, developed under the superintendent's guidelines and administrative guidelines on how to actually administer this policy. But this is a policy that we need to um, pass today on the third reading.
Great, thank you. So we have two policies, policy fifty-four sixty uh, graduation requirements and fifty-four sixty point oh-two, students at risk of not qualifying for a high school diploma that uh, we are looking uh, for a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on those two policies. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion for the Legal Contracts and Board Policy Committee?
I just want to say one.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to say one additional thing. I I didn't know we were doing both of them at the same time. So I didn't say anything about the graduation requirement policy. I just want to say that it gives students um, two additional options for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, I believe, classes or graduating classes, and then starting in twenty twenty-one, I believe. Um, there will be, these will be the new uh, requirements for them. I think it provides uh, flexible uh, ways for multiple different students to find a way to graduate um, and get something meaningful out of it. I'm really excited about the seals. And at some point, um, hopefully Karen, um, Gigi, or um, Dr. Ellen McWilliams Woods can um, talk to those who didn't get a chance to hear about that as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have Mark Black on the line who can address any questions.
Good. Any comments or questions for Mr. Black or the Policy Committee? All right. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Alexander.
I I just want to say that uh, we need to thank Karen Gigi too, because she came in uh, and explained the policies really well and gave us a good understanding, and also gave us information to explain uh, in a short uh, briefing how how the this will affect our students and and how uh, our superintendent and the the administration had worked hard to make sure we have all these others so the students can can graduate, and uh, I think that's very, very good. So I want to thank her for uh, uh, coming to explain it to us. Thank you.
Good, thank you. The only comment I have is uh, going back to something that uh, Dr. Hall said a minute ago too about always being ahead of the curve, and we've been ahead of the curve uh, even when it comes to alternative pathways and graduation requirements, so thanks to our staff and and putting all of those things in place for our kids and continuing to be a leader, so thank you for that, and thanks to the Policy Committee. We do have a motion and a second. If there are no further comments, questions, or discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Finance and Capital Management Committee?
Yeah, this is Dr. Hall. Yeah, I mean, I think that Ryan, you know, gave a a really good synopsis of sort of um, what's been ongoing and uh, why we've elected to not have separate and distinct meetings, so again, uh, I just want to applaud uh, Mr. Pendleton on his on his continued efforts um, uh, in this regard. Uh, Ms. Autry, do you have any anything to add?
No, just concur and thank you, uh, Ryan, for you and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Instructional Policy and Student Achievement?
I just have a real quick, I have Mark Williamson uh, texting me some information, which is, that's way easier than when he's trying to signal me from across the boardroom. But he wanted me to give you an updated number, so if you take all of the meals that we've served, um, that our cafeteria staff has done such a fantastic job. Remember, this just started last Tuesday. So Tuesday through Monday, we didn't have it on Friday, so four day total is thirty-five thousand meals served to our students in an unorthodox way, in a way that we've not, you know, ever really considered having to do, so we did, we've just done an amazing job on that, and so since he was giving me those statistics, I figured I would uh, give uh, pick on him a little bit and then go ahead and shout those out. Um, and hopefully, we'll get back to having instructional policy because I do miss seeing Dr. McWilliams Woods' face. And um, so I just get to read her words and her emails, but um, we'll hopefully get back to uh, having those, even if they're like this, so that we can get updates. I feel like I get an instructional policy update every time I get an email right now, so it's going pretty well, I think.
Yeah, those emails are fantastic. All right. Anything else from any of the committees? If not, we have no unfinished business, no new business, and no need to reset us into executive session. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything else for this board?
Not at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else from any of the other board members before we adjourn?
Great job, Patrick.
Yeah, great job, Bill.
Yes. Very effective meeting. Move to adjourn.
Second.
I think we must, uh,
Our our Vice President called.
Somebody else want to make the motion then?
You made the motion.
I think, I think.
We've got a motion from Dr. Akbar. Mr. Alexander's second, and all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Thanks so much for uh, our first attempt at this. Um, looks like uh, it was a success, so thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, have a good evening.
Good evening.
Stay well.